And I said, hey, how do I get in on this?
Yeah, you know, there was a discussion. I clicked a couple of things from the Hudson Valley one. And one of them had to do with CEAs in New Falls, I think. And Ingrid, oh, I know where it was. There's something going on in the in the Blue Sound Press about it, too.
Oh, okay.
All right, I've got the map up. I'm coming back into the meeting. So whenever we need it there.
Okay, thank you.
I put that newspaper clipping.
Hi, George, how are you?
Hello, Melissa, nice to see you.
You, too. How are you guys doing?
It's a dismal sort of day today, isn't it? Where I live, rain is better than snow.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. I I I hope it continues to rain until I drive home.
So do I.
You know, Melissa, it's not clear how you register for this thing.
I know, you have to. Oh, I forgot my phone. You gotta find it on the page and
Well, it says deadline to apply, but it doesn't
No, no, but that's if you wanted to create to like get in on the CEAs. Keep going further down the screen. That has an April date. This is March 23rd. You gotta or up further up on the screen.
March 23rd. No, it's upcoming webinar.
Yep, there's a link right in it.
There's actually a link. The title is a link.
Hey, you got it?
Then you go in there and it says register.
There you go. I know it was different. I did the same thing you did. I looked at it and I was like, oh, that's not what I want.
Very informal. They want your first name and your email address, but not. I guess I'll send them my personal email address, huh?
No, whatever one you want to take the. Yeah.
This year, I'm not gonna have trouble getting my credits.
No. Definitely not. You never do, Judy. You're always on the ball.
Oh, yeah, one last year I did or the year before.
Not since I've been here. You're very diligent.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Brian.
That is not a well-designed page. The last is all the way over on the right.
A lot of pages these days are not like mobile friendly, like tablet friendly.
That's true.
Jess Walker will be popping in eventually. He's got some things going on, so just so you know. I'm not. Probably around eight o'clock, but. Thank you. Hi, Stuart.
Hello, how are you, Melissa?
I'm good, how are you?
Great.
Let's do it.
Hi, Judy.
Hello, Stuart, Judy, Brian.
Mr. LaBelle. Little off.
Good evening.
There's Mr. Rudikoff.
There he is. You're getting shaggy, Matt.
Not sure if he hears you yet, Judy.
I just got my second haircut in a month because the first one was so bad that I went to somebody else, so I'm very short.
Hi, James.
Melissa, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good to find you there.
I know, you gotta. It's overwhelming.
How's everybody?
Good.
Hi, James.
Hello, hello, Judy.
Well, thank you, how are you?
Good, Brian.
Looks like we need a chair.
You do?
Oh.
Stuart can fill in.
Step on any toes.
I did see him. I saw him yesterday. He planned on being here. I didn't hear anything. Before we begin, I'm just gonna ask that everyone on the screen, if you could mute yourself unless the public be heard or you were asked to talk. Sometimes it gets a little hard to hear the cases we need to hear with the chatter in the background. Thank you. Hi, Peter.
Hey, Melissa.
Hello, Peter.
Hi, John, hi, everybody. Start a few minutes later. Hi, hi, Stuart. A little trouble signing in the Zoom just now. Okay. It is seven o'clock. And let me look around. We do have a quorum, I believe. We do, okay. So I'd like to call to order the regular Zoom meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for March 18th, 2021. So Melissa, do you have any updates to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Regarding minutes, we have the minutes for March 4th. I do have a correction.
You wanna email me it, Peter?
What's that?
You can just email it to me and I'll fix them.
Will you do it tomorrow?
Yeah, well, next week, yeah.
Okay.
We've got some people who are not muted who have noise in their background.
I tried.
I just muted them, Judy.
Okay.
You can send me the correction and then I'll just add them to next meeting agenda. Okay.
Alrighty. Okay, so under Communications and Announcements. First one is we have an email from Supervisor McKenna regarding the moratorium. And since we have a public hearing right now in five at five after, let's do that right after we take care of the business. And then we also have a memo from Matt Rudikoff regarding the Tassumpus application, which we will get to in the meeting. And then we also have a letter to Rudikoff from Moriella regarding the Tassumpus driveways, which I'll have Matt addressed in the meeting. So tonight we have one public hearing and two sketch plan reviews. And then we have later discussion on Mountain View Realty. So the public hearing set for 7:05 is Brett and Jessica Erkman, which is Special Use Permit 21-0581. And this is the virtual public hearing for a special use permit application for construction of two buildings and other projects renovations in the R5 and Scenic Overlay District located at 387 Lions Road in Mount Trevor.
Tim's Road, isn't it?
I'm sorry. Yep, Tim's Road. So it's a public hearing. So I'm going to accept to open the public hearing, can I?
Give a second.
And all in favor?
All right.
Okay, so first of all, is there anybody in the public on this meeting for this? For this case?
I believe no.
Okay, are there any letters or communications regarding this case? No.
No, we have the applicant and and Grayden here. We have Brett and and Grayden here.
Right. Well, they've already presented to the board twice their proposal and Connor, I think he's gone with us here. Had went to do the site view and gave us a report. So unless anybody from the public has anything to say, I suggest that I'll take close the public hearing.
Most of the public hearing.
All in favor? All right.
All right. Bye.
So, you know, this was an application in the scenic overlay. And I think we've done everything possible. I know Connor was very exact about making sure that everything met the standards in the scenic overlay. So I think that unless anybody on the board has any questions regarding this application. No, all right. So we've closed the public hearing and
Just approve the application.
And yeah, I'd like to go ahead and accept to close the application. Well, here a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Are you inviting a motion to approve the application subject to a resolution?
Yes, resolution comes later.
Very good. Okay, thanks, Stuart.
Everything freeze just now?
On you.
I'll move.
You froze, Stuart.
Grayden, do you have any questions? We're good. It's paperwork. I'll be in touch. Final plans?
Uh, great. No question. You're definitely frozen, Stuart.
All right, folks, moving on. This is a sketch plan review. This would be, I think, our second or third sketch plan review for the Michael Tassumpus application, which is planning board case 19-1217. And this is a Woodstock Wetlands Water Course Permit application for 19-042. This sketch plan review is a sketch plan review of a revised plan and Wetlands Water Course Permit application for a mine subdivision application to create three lots from 60 acres. And Wetlands Water Course Permit required to cross Wetlands buffers located at the R in the R3 zoning district of Chestnut Hill Road in Woodstock. So Matt has got a memo which has been circulated. And at this point, Matt, if you would like, please to go through your memo. And also include in it the letter from Moriella regarding the driveways. Okay, Matt?
Well, I just to start with that driveway, I really think that that's more a matter of the engineer and the town attorney to comment on in terms of the legality of that.
Yeah, yeah, I read it. I mean, basically, it's sort of a it's an agreement. It's a shared driveway agreement, but it's a little more complicated than the usual ones, so. But go ahead, Matt, with
Maybe we should have Dennis Larios look at that first. He's he's been on this, working on this case. But we're not, I don't think we're quite we're quite there yet because there's some things about the plan that we're still dealing with under Seeker and under the wetland and water course application. But our memo sort of addresses a couple, you know, not such significant points on the on the Seeker. Answering some questions on the EF more fully. But the main questions really are still on the of the wetland impact. Obviously, the extent of impact is lessened dramatically by the reduction to three lots. But this is the second time we've seen that three lot subdivision. And so the real issue is that we, you know, think that the that the buffer impact is is just a matter of calculation is being understated because it's not counting some of the wetland buffer that should be just
You know, I actually, I man, I have to disagree with you on that. I mean, we show every square footage of buffer area the road's in. Can you show me on the map where we didn't include it?
Well, I don't have, I don't have the map up, but
I'm sure Melissa could do that.
Pardon?
We need protocol in the meeting. We need protocol in the meeting, so let Matt speak and then let the chair. Thank you.
Well, you know, the the point I'm making is that the wetland buffer from the lot from the lot that is adjacent to the driveway where the wetland is located, the buffer extends onto the Sumpus property from the wetland that's off-site. So the road that goes through that's the first section of roadway before the first driveway is definitely through wetland buffer. It just is not, the wetland isn't on the Sumpus property, but the buffer certainly is. So I'm not sure what you what you mean by that, Barry, that you're not going through that.
Well, we show on the map two areas, Matt, where when you first come off of the road, the driveway goes through about a 200-foot section of the buffer. And then it goes out of the buffer for a couple hundred feet. And then it has another 600.
But why do you say it goes out of the buffer in that second location?
Because it does, the buffer, because the wetland zigzags in and out. If we look at the map, you could say I could point it out to you. If we give, I know, Melissa, are you able to post the map on so we could just all look at it so everybody understands what we're doing here?
Do you have it or no?
While that's happening, I'd like to make
Melissa, I have it if you need.
Let Peter make the direct. Hold on. Let Peter direct the hearing, otherwise we're gonna have, you know, 12 different ideas of what to do.
Well, that's why you guys are looking at it. I wanna make one thing clear that Matt's memo is to address all the issues to this application so that we have a complete application so that we can move it forward to a public hearing. But I wanna make it clear that when the planning board reviews the Wetland Water Course Permit application, the planning board will take into consideration what has infringed in the buffer and where and how the remediation should take place. That is not something that is predetermined by the applicant. The planning board will decide where those buffers change, okay? So it's not something that's predetermined, but please, Matt, go ahead with your
Just Barry, you know, Barry's point and my point are sort of at odds, not at odds with one another, but we we're envisioning that that the lot to the south, the May property, that the wetland that's on that May property, that the buffer for that wetland extends onto the Sumpus property. Unless Barry
Yes, and we and we map it that way. We show it that way, Matt.
No, but that way, the whole road, the whole entry road is in
No, if you look, though, there is a, it doesn't exactly. It's it zigzags in. I mean, we surveyed it. We had our wetlands. You know, biologist will flag it. We surveyed it. I think the planning board walked it, the environmental. Nobody seemed to have an issue with where we identified the wetlands. And as you go on that driveway, it just that the 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 wetland kind of like zigs in and out. It's not like this uniform line. It, you know, it follows the contour of the land. And and you could see if our buffer, if you look at my map, you could see where we have it. Is this the map? Yes, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
If you can just zoom in a little bit where the the entrance road is. It, yep. Maybe just a little bit more.
So you're saying that none of the, none of, none of the, none of the buffer from wetland A goes onto your road?
Well, you could, you could see the the 100-foot setback there. Yeah, because what happens is, well, actually, this doesn't show. This map doesn't show the the whole detail there. I think if you go to the the map that shows the road, it's a blow-up detail of the road section. Let me see if I got it. Was that part of that same set of documents? Yes, yes. Tell me the, is it sheet two or sheet? What is, what sheet is it? Hold on, I'm looking it up right now. I'll tell you in a second. I think it's It's, I think it's sheet six. If you go to sheet six, it shows a blow up there. All right, I gotta find that. That's not on this email. Let me see if there's another email here.
Again, though, I want to remind everybody that the board is not reviewing the special
You know, I I think we could demonstrate that we mapped the wetlands accurately. You know, we don't have to do it tonight and take up everybody's time. But but we did, there is a limit, the whole entire access We're saying there's, basically, what we're saying, there's two sections that were disturbed in the wetland buffer. The first part of that road is when it comes right off of the road for about a 200-foot section. And then and then the 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 wetland, you know, gets a little further away. And then it comes back to the road. And then there's a further down on the map that's shown now. If you go along the driveway and then and then we're in that buffer again, right there for another almost 600 feet. So there's two sections. Yes, yeah. So coming in off the road, there's 200 feet, and then there's a gap of disturbance in that buffer. And then there's another disturbance that runs further along, probably right off of the sheet here to where the driveway then makes the turn. So in all total, I think we have just the acreage is it's actually listed, I believe, in that chart there, if you I don't know why this is not moving around, but Yeah, actually, let me Don't know why I keep it around. It's not seeing me. I know, I know my assistant Heather's with us, is the one who actually put these maps together. So it's it's about, it's just under a half an acre of buffer disturbance that we have, and it's all along that road on the lower section before it makes the turn and go up the hill.
So it's continuous, but that's, that was, that's what we were commenting on, that we thought that this first, this initial section was not included in your, in your
It's in the calculation. There's a half acre of road there that's in.
And that's the lot number, that's and the driveway to lot number one?
It's in both lots. It's in both of those lots.
Typically, the curb cut at lot number one and the culverts are through the wetland buffer?
Well, no, no, lot number one, all of the house site and the driveway, everything is out of the buffer and wetland. And lot one is the lot you don't see. It's up the one that has direct access to Chestnut Hill Road.
I didn't mean lot one, I meant lot two. I meant
Yeah, so, yeah, so lot two, the beginning of the driveway, yes, because coming right off the road, you're in the buffer.
Okay.
And I might point out that this whole section of the road, it's it's a wood roads now, you know, you could drive on it. And the planning board members went out to the site, we all walked this in the fall. Yeah, that's right, you were out there. Your wetland specialist out there, there were quite a few people out there who walked it. And and they didn't seem to have a big problem with where the location was. And it was a big improvement over where, when we, you know, before we dropped the two lots, where we required a natural crossing.
I don't have a problem with, I don't have a problem with the the road going through the buffer there. And the total amount of impact in the buffer is is a factor, but you know, you're gonna be doing some mitigation anyway, so
Yes.
This comment had to, this comment addressed the fact that the plan that we saw that I was reviewing, I'm not sure if it was a mistake on my part, but that first section of road of the driveway was not included in the buffer because the the wetland to the south of it on the May property, the wetland didn't extend nor, excuse me, the buffer didn't extend north of the wetland in the map that we're seeing. But what you just showed me, it is showing that, so that's that's fine.
Okay, I can get some more clarification on that, too.
Yeah, so we'll, that's okay, we'll, we'll, we'll follow through on that. The point is raised and we'll get it clarified. I think the next point really has to do again with what Peter was saying. Excited to hear what that person was saying.
Who was speaking?
That was Maxanne, and she was not thinking about the fact that she could be heard, I guess.
Oh, I see.
Again, I'm gonna remind everyone to mute yourself, please. Unless you're a planning board member, please mute yourself. It's in the bottom screen if you scroll the mouse. Thank you.
So I guess my comment is really more along the lines of the adequacy of the mitigation measures. And the plan that we saw was still those two sort of isolated areas on the slope and in the center of the existing wetlands, which really didn't really seem to have any real impact on the wetlands. And we just thought and had proposed when Barry had written me or called me and asked for our input. And I sent the email to the board members that preceded the memo. And of course, the memo says the exact same thing that the email said, which is that we felt that vegeta, a vegetative buffer along the southern edge of the roadway was a much more appropriate mitigation because that would really strengthen the wetland protective qualities of the buffer and that there's room for it because the 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 slope actually falls away from the from the existing road. And we just thought that that was a more appropriate location for buffer impact, which would be vegetation along the driveway.
So Matt, what exactly would you want us to put there?
I don't know, we have to, you have to propose, you have to
Because it's a, it's a heavily vegetated area now, and I felt going in there is just creating more disturbance.
Right at the edge, you know, with the edge of your pavement is gonna be
Yeah, well, it's a woods road now, and yeah, there are trees and scrub and brush and and and, you know, we have to do a little clearing to widen it to meet the standard. So we're gonna be doing some clearing in there already. And if we were gonna do some kind of planting, we would have to do more clearing for planting. I don't understand the real benefit of that.
No, no, you're
My client is willing to do whatever the planning board would like for mitigation. The reason I showed the big slope areas because I thought, I thought we had a discussion one of the earlier meetings where the planning board, and I can't remember if somebody suggested or that, where we just expanded the buffer area, created more buffer. And so what I looked at and I thought, well, the steep slope, if we, you know, we put that in a restricted area and nobody does anything on that steep slope, that flows right down to the wetland and, you know, would help protect it from any future, you know, somebody trying to do something in there. But if the planning board doesn't like that, we'll be happy to move that or provide whatever mitigation they feel is appropriate.
But that's, that's what Peter, that's what the chairman was saying. Now, when the planning board goes through the wetland checklist and identifies the wetland, the wetland water course permit checklist, they'll, they'll have a discussion regarding the kind of mitigation they think is appropriate. So as long as you know that we're doing that and we have the option of, of, you know, doing some vegetative areas, we would want to create disturbance of existing vegetation to buffer, to buffer the wetland. It would only be in areas where you've created disturbance for the construction work, like for the driveway or the culverts or measures that are going to get constructed. And if there were disturbed areas, those would be suitable areas for the for the vegetation.
Well, we're not gonna, Matt, we're not gonna disturb any more than we need for the actual driveway. And and there aren't, you know, so
Other than the wetlands, which we will deal with in another meeting, I'd like if Matt would make sure we go over whatever needs to be addressed to have a complete application.
So Right, so on on number six, going down, we're on, we're on wetland things pretty much for the initial items in the memo, other than the seeker items, which are the two questions that we're saying needed needed to be answered for seeker. That's a description of the action, should just, you know, note the proposed common driveway access. And now there'll be a reference to the agreement that'll be in place. And so that's just a matter of some narrative that just sort of sets that forth, just a sentence or two. And then we had questions about the buffer impact quantities, but I'll reserve those for for looking at the drawing that you were showing us, Barry. So so let's move on to item number six, getting off the wetland stuff. And that had to do with some things, questions we had asked previously about that there was a question about the site distances on the delineation of the driveway that's coming off of Chestnut Hill, that we thought that there was a concern about site distances, or they just needed to be established and shown that they were adequate, I guess, is
Well, you, you know, we do have a letter of approval from the highway superintendent for these driveways.
Well, that's up to the planning board. They accept that, that's fine. And so then we have the common driveway is addressed with the, with the, what was sent in with the easement. And that needs to be reviewed by the county attorney or the engineer to see that it's adequate. You haven't had any conversation with Dennis Larios about that, have you, Barry?
No, no, I would let the attorneys handle that. I mean, I could talk to Dennis about any of these issues if it's necessary.
Right. And then how do we have, my last comment was on the driveway, is the fire department satisfied with the with the length of the driveway going up to the the home site on lot three?
I I believe we had that discussion like a year ago with the fire department. And just since I got your letter, I asked the owner, Mike, who's here, to see if you can hunt down the fire department and get a more formal response from them. So we will get that. And I, we do, we do meet the the fire apparatus road standards that are in Appendix D of the state building code.
Or for the specifications of the roads?
Yeah, we we meet those specifications, so I don't think that's gonna be a problem. And and that's something I could go over with Dennis, too. But we will try to get some kind of response from the fire department.
And then the only other And then the only other comment we have is on the recreation reservation and how that's being, uh, uh, addressed in terms of whether that's going to be a, a land set aside or a payment in lieu of.
And I'm sure the applicant's gonna pay whatever fees, you know, need to be established.
Yeah, I would think in this case, that's probably a better option, because the land, um, that's, it's not being developed, isn't really suitable for recreation, I mean, being wetlands and all, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna pay the, the fee.
Okay.
Good, so that, that's really, that's, that's really all, it was primarily, you know, the, the concern that, um, we thought a more creative wetland buffer could be created, but it really, we need to see. I think one of the things we were asking about, we didn't, um, uh, in terms of the driveway, are you, are you, um, showing the extent of disturbance in terms of the driveway?
Yes, yeah, we show, we show grading plans, we show the acreage, it's all in there, it's all in the plans.
Okay, good. So then it's just a matter of the planning board deciding on the kind of buffer treatment they want, or the kind of mitigation measures they want. And that's really all we have.
Okay, well, Melissa will eventually, uh, set up an appointment, uh, schedule a, a meeting that the planning board will go over the wetlands water course permit.
Was, was the, um, Morello letter discussed by Matt at all? Are we good with that?
No, only that it's, should be referred to the attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, so we need to get the, that approved. Um, and, uh, is there anything else Melissa can think of or Matt can think of that needs to be addressed before we can, uh, move on to the next stage for this application?
No, I think it's a big improvement.
Okay, speaking of that, I again want to thank the applicant and Barry, um, for doing a, a good solid thing for the town. Uh, you know, we're talking about establishing critical environmental areas, and that certainly would have been one. And I'm so glad the applicant, uh, decided to, uh, to leave that area undisturbed. It's, we really appreciate that. Um, other than that.
Thank the applicant, he was quite willing to do that.
Well, we appreciate that, um.
No need to thank me.
Is there any, uh, do board members have any other questions regarding this application?
No questions, just to say I think it's a good outcome and I'm really pleased with it.
Yes, thank you very much.
Could I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, is it, I'm just trying to, you know, game plan for the spring and the summer. So i- is it realistic to assume that we could maybe, uh, have one more meeting, a board meeting and we could kind of iron things out, and then after that, we could call for the public hearing? I'm just looking for the light at the end of the tunnel, that's all.
I believe that Melissa could answer that, but yes, I believe so, go ahead, Melissa.
Is there any reason, we couldn't just schedule the public hearing now?
We have to, we have to take care of the, the wetlands and water course permit. Um, and that should be done before, because then we can combine the wetlands and the subdivision, and we can do it all in one for a public hearing. I'm hopeful we can do one more meeting, if you all agree and we all come together. I, Peter, right?
Yeah, I believe so, I believe so. And then we'll have.
Okay, so let me ask you, Peter, so does the board have a special meeting, the applicant that comes to discuss the, uh, the, uh, checklist on the wetlands, I mean, how, how's that handled?
Well, the board, uh, it's, it's between the board, but the applicant is certainly, it's a public meeting, so the applicant certainly can attend the meeting. But no, it's just a discussion between planning board members of what they feel is the best way to, uh, handle the, the mitigation.
And that's not a regular scheduled meeting?
It's a regular scheduled meeting, correct. We, we go through a checklist and we come up with findings. And those findings will determine how we, uh, amongst ourselves determine what the mitigation plan should be. Which is the next step.
Is that something we could do at the next meeting?
That's up to Melissa and her scheduling, I, I don't know what she's got.
I'll keep you posted.
We're moving as fast as we can, folks, um, as again, I'm, I'm so glad that, uh, it's come to the point that it is now, which is a great improvement, so we'll, we'll hope to move you guys along real quick.
I'll, I'll invite you guys to be there also, we just, like you said, just kind of sit back and listen and let the planning board do their checklist. Connor?
Hello, can you hear me?
There, now we can.
We have to music, I think.
Yeah, sorry, I was getting a call.
Do you have any comments, Connor, on this application?
No, no, I was just saying, I just thanked them for the.
Okay, all right, well, Barry and, uh, and, uh, Michael, um, very good, I think we're getting there. And, uh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, so the next sketch plan review is, uh, is, uh, Margaret Dahl and Whitmer PAC SUP 21-0588. And this is a sketch plan review of a specially used permit application to construct one family home to replace a recently demolished house located in the R5 Scenic Overlay zoning district at 301 Hutchen Hill Road in Shady. So, is the applicant here? Yes, Maggie, okay, would you go ahead and please explain to the board what your plans are?
Um, I'm gonna defer to, uh, Mitchell for that.
Thank you, Maggie.
Welcome.
Uh, hi, I'm Mitchell Owen, I'm the architect, um, for Maggie and George. And, um, the plan is to, um, uh, rebuild a single-family house on a, a, a property that previously housed, um, a house, uh, that was recently demolished. Uh, it was, uh, not in livable condition, so it's not a, um, a loss in any way. The new house, it will be built, um, a little farther off the road, uh, and is heavily screened from Hutchen Hill Road. And, um, there does not seem to be any, uh, view of this house as proposed from any major, um, well, any place, as it, it's on the backside of, of the mountain. Um, and, um, we, we would love to hear your feedback on the, the plans that we present.
Okay, I'm looking at the plan on my other screen here, so let me just ask a couple of questions. Uh, does the septic system exist, and if it does, are you going to use it, or you have to build a new one?
There is an exac- uh, existing septic system that we're abandoning, and we're, um, proposing a new one, which I believe was included in the, uh, documents that we presented.
Okay, so it'll be a new septic. Um, the house is obviously in a different site from before. The driveway will be extended or improved or?
The, the driveway will be, um, the curb cut will remain the same. And as it comes off, it will curve slightly into a new garage, rather than going, proceeding directly into, uh, what was a parking area, uh, previously.
Okay, um, so.
If you'd like, I can share the plans as well, I have them up here.
I just put it up.
Yeah, that's the septic plan, I believe.
Oh, okay, well, you've got the other one, I'll, I'll.
Okay.
All right, you, Mitchell.
All right, well, this is at the top of, or pretty close to the top of Hutch Hill. Um, so the first thing we need is some site reps. And I know we've been hitting Connor pretty heavy with these scenic overlay, uh, sites, so I don't know if he's into it. I will volunteer, um, because I'm doing a survey right up the road from there. Um, so I will certainly be a volunteer, I don't know if Connor, uh, can do this also, Connor, can you?
Uh, what, when, what works for you, I'm a little bit preoccupied this weekend.
Yeah, for me, Connor, I have to do it on my own, because like, like you, I, I just never know when I got the moment to run up, but, if, if you can run up at any time. And if not, if any other member of the board, uh, wants to look at the site. Um, again, this is the scenic overlay. Um, and we're going to take every precaution we can uh, to make sure it meets all the, um, restrictions of being in a scenic overlay, which of course will include glazing, which I assume you folks have your glazing, uh, specs. Um, it'll include, um, outside lighting, which has to be dark sky compliant. Um, and it will include the look and see if it is visible, um, from other buildings or other locations or, or, uh, state trails and so on. So those are going to be our main, uh, objects to look at. Uh, let me ask you right now, what kind of roof are you proposing?
Currently, we're, we're planning on an EPDM roof, a rubber roof.
A rubber roof?
Black.
Black or gray?
Yes.
Black, uh-huh, okay. Um, and I don't have the glazing specs in front of me, but you do know that there's, uh, restrictions on glazing?
Yes, I believe that if, if needed, we, we can apply coatings.
Okay, so.
And I, I have one question about that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, it, is it automatic that the glazing be coated, or is it only if it's seen?
Well, um, there's, there's a limited amount of glazing on each, uh, wall. Um, but that can be mitigated by shading or by, uh, the film that can be put on glass. And there's certain glasses that are non-reflective. Um, so it depends how much glazing you have. Um, if you're within the allowed amount, then it can be, um, whatever glazing you want. Um, yes, go ahead.
It looks like, from my map, uh, the house faces across a ravine. So I'm not sure what the, what the visibility is. I don't know where the glass would go, I mean, that's one question.
Right, right, um.
Obviously, the photograph I have has the old house on it, doesn't tell us anything, but it, it does seem that you're, you're facing across a ravine.
Well, if I could just comment there.
There you go.
Just facing onto Hutchen Hill Road. This building will not be visible from any other residents. It's not visible from any trail or escarpment. And the house will be shaded by existing very old maple trees out in the front of it.
Very good, that brings us to the next important point, which, um, is the, uh, clearing that has to be done um, for the house. And leaving, uh, as you just said, these trees, which we hope to see, which will be a good, uh, screening. Um, what we're trying to prevent everywhere in a scenic overlay is cutting trees that expose new construction. So that's our objective.
Yeah, well, I think about half of the site is already previously cleared, uh, by the previous owner, who was a Homer Foster. And, um, there are very few large trees, I can only think about one that probably has to be taken down, the rest are really scrubby, scrappy trees, including a few of the usual dead ash trees. Um, and maybe two that have to be taken out for the septic system. But we do, we do anticipate planting additional trees, um, as necessary to screen it, using probably, um, pine and birch trees, there's a lot of birch up there. Um, so that's kind of a natural indigenous tree on Hutchen Hill Road.
Okay, let me ask, Connor, are you there, um? Could you?
Yeah.
Tell the applicant your ideas about how we monitor or, uh, be sure that, um, the site plan, the trees and on a site plan, uh, stay the way they are?
Uh, well, the short of it is, depending on how much clear cutting you intend to do and where the, uh, canopy exists now and what, if you're going to cut into it, we would ask you to hire, and there are plenty of local guys, as it turns out, but we can give you a recommendation for a drone photographer to fly up to, uh, between probably 100, 200 feet, take a snapshot of your property, namely, uh, the area of disturbance and show, uh, where the canopy occurs, if it's even visible from that high, which it probably should be. And, uh, that way we can get a really good idea, you know, because I mean, this is helpful and it has the elevations, but seeing where the screening is, where, how, how it sits in the property and where, and what we really need to be avoiding in a proactive way, uh, is a pretty, uh, quick and painless way to do it.
Um, yes, we'd be happy to do that. Um, we can't move very much because we're restricted by the, um, setbacks that are required on the two key sides of this, from the road and from the west side. Um, I did provide in the application, um, screenshots from the, um, Oyster County interactive tax map aerials and from Google aerials, gives you a sense of what's there already. Um, but happy to do the drone if you think that would help.
Uh, do you?
Go ahead, Connor.
All, all I was gonna say is a lot, I, I'm, I can't, I don't want to speak for whatever you've found, but I, I know a lot of the stuff we found on Google and Hudsonia and our normal resources are not super current. So we, uh, so that's why, where the drone comes in.
Okay, um, so, um, this is the first sketch review. We will do a site, uh, inspection. I will volunteer if Connor can, or we have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll go, uh, please do pass my contact on to the applicant. You can text me and we'll set up a time.
Okay.
Is it, was that Connor speaking?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the first sketch, we're gonna do a, a site, uh, inspection. And then if the applicant can make sure that Melissa has, uh, what she needs for the roof sample, a siding sample, um, lighting, the, the cut sheets of the kind of lights you're gonna have outside lights, uh, that they're dark sky compliant. Um, and then, um, the drone pictures when they come available. And then, uh, Melissa will set up a second sketch plan review to make sure we have everything in order before we schedule a public hearing.
Peter?
Yes, John?
Um, is there BOH approval for the new septic?
Um, the septic engineer said that was not necessary because there was an existing approval for an existing septic.
But you're gonna build a new one, right?
Well, we have to move it, yeah, yeah.
Right, so that would.
The previous one.
The new board of health approval, I would think, but that's up to the board of health. We, the planning board, as John brought up, the planning board will need, um, board of health approval from the county. If they approve what's there, that's up to them, but we need it in order to process the application.
Okay, the septic engineer told us that wasn't necessary. And also Ellen, when she was up there, said it would not be necessary. But.
I don't understand if you're building a new one, well, John knows more, go ahead, John.
Okay.
Well, and the point being that what was there is how old?
Old. 60 years.
And they said that you did not need approval for a new system, I find that almost incredible.
I mean, normally you have to do perk tests and pit tests.
Yeah, they did that.
You've done all that?
Yes, on the en, it's on the engineer's, uh, plan.
Well, that goes to the board of health in, in the county.
Oh, yeah, maybe.
To the permit.
Yeah, I guess he's taking care of that.
Oh, so he's sending it to the county?
I'll, I'll check with the engineer, we used an engineer that was recommended by Ellen, um.
George, just make sure with the engineer that you, you do need board of health approval for the new septic system. And, and make sure that we get that information, they just sign off on the plan.
I will contact Chris immediately.
Thank you.
So the engineer is who, George?
Uh, Chris DeChiaro.
Oh, okay, yes, we know.
Yeah, you know him, he's done.
Yeah. Do other, any other members of the board have questions about this application?
I do, Peter, it's just a point of information, if anybody knows, is there a process that has to be followed for abandoning a septic tank? And does the board of health have to look at that, as to how it's abandoned, does the parts have to be taken out, does that be filled in?
We can't even, we can't even find it, I think it was, Ellen said she thought it would have been a steel tank and that it's, it's just corroded away. The septic was not functioning, um, when the house was abandoned a few years ago.
Well, to George's point, normally what happens is you do try to find it and crush it and fill it, because, um, we've had situations where deer, dogs, people have fallen into old tanks.
Um, it's buried under crushed block right now, I, if, if it was even there, we, he looked for it and couldn't find it. Or excavator.
All right. Stuart, any other question on this one?
No.
Anybody on the board, on the board members have questions regarding this application?
No.
Judy?
No.
Oh, okay, Melissa, so as soon as we get your site reviews in and everything, you can schedule a second sketch review, right? All righty, well, very good, gentlemen.
Well, Peter and Connor will be in touch with you guys. I'll give them your information. George, I'll give them your cell phone number so they can let you know when they're going to come for the site visit.
Better to give the home phone number. There's no reception up Hutchins Hill Road. I'm just five minutes away, so I can meet you guys there anytime.
Okay, George, I'll shoot you an email next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Very good. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, now, under discussions, we have the Mountain Meadow Realty LLC, which is specially used for the 18-0364A Bank of Green County. And this is a follow-up, RE the Resolution to Meet Conditions. The public hearing was held in July 19th, 2018 for an approval site plan review application for modifications to existing site plan in addition storefront for future retail bank use. Martinet removal and replacement signage relocation and minor sidewalk revisions in the HC zoning district, in the hamlet preservation overlay, and the flood fringe overlay district. So we do have Jess here, right? Jess, you want to go ahead and explain what is going on?
Sure, let me just put up a drawing. In July of 18, we went back to you to break out the bank. The Bank of America used to be this L-shaped space, if you can see, Retail C and D. And we separated, one second, let me zoom in. We separated a retail space and put in new storefronts for potential tenants. We now have two tenants. We would like to split Retail D into two spaces. And this meeting is really about parking. We already have the use as retail. So we are proposing and asking for some off-site parking. We defined the parking when this drawing was approved by planning and the CCD in 18 as that Retail D had eight cars left over in the lot after all the other businesses that were existing at the time. And these two businesses, one second, let me put up another drawing. These two new businesses are going to require 13 off-site spaces. And all the math is done in the submittal that I gave you on Tuesday. So we're really asking for 13 spaces for two new businesses in the bank building of Bradley Meadows Plaza.
But you said they're sharing one space?
No, it's two separate units. At the time, we broke it off of the Bank of Green County unit. We broke Retail D off. We said it would either be one or two more new units. And there's two businesses going in. One is a bakery and one is a liquor store, a wine store.
Now, the drawing says cafe, but that's the bakery, right?
It's a bakery cafe. It functions as a cafe, but it's called Cafe Bakery. The kitchen is a commercial kitchen for baking, for baking only.
Great.
Jess, those are the two existing storefronts that are there in addition to the bank.
Yes, we're not changing the outside of the building. We are merely renovating the interiors and asking for adequate parking.
You do mention signage. You're proposing new signs?
Yes, well, the liquor store doesn't have a sign yet and the bakery just submitted their application to the building department.
Board members, any other questions for Jess?
Stuart, I have a question, a basic question. Jess could explain what he means by off-site parking. I understand what an existing parking space is, but what do you mean by an off-site space?
Oh, there's a law in this town that you're allowed to request off-site spaces if you don't have adequate parking for your use on-site.
And you pay for it.
And you pay for it.
Well, that's the fee, the fee, the fee business that you've heard.
Yes.
In lieu of, yeah.
Okay, so it's a fee in lieu of an actual space.
But the resolution that was drafted prior didn't have any exacts and it got lost in between. So my thought is we amend the resolution. We calculate the planning, the parking off-site, like we've done prior, and move forward if the planning board's okay. Let me know your thoughts.
Does that sound good to everybody on the board, or do you have questions?
Well, I have another question. This is Stuart. Is this application made by the owner of the entire shopping plaza there?
Yes.
Right, so presumably the owner's on board with obviously putting the tenants in. But I'm just wondering whether these, like the bakery and liquor store and all, the people who patronize that are going to be using whatever spaces are available anywhere on the plaza, I assume, to get in, leave their car, go into the store. So it's going to put an additional load on the plaza. But since they're asking for it, you know, just.
Hardly ever full.
Really? Not on the weekends.
Well, on the weekends, yeah. I don't go down there on the weekends. But I have a question about this plan, and that is fire exit. That cafe does not seem to have any way out other than the front door.
If your occupation is under 49 persons, you only need one exit.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
And travel distance is involved there, but that's not a consideration here.
Okay, didn't know that.
You also don't need panic hardware on your doors if you're under 49 persons.
Jess, what about the kitchen and grease traps and such?
We have a grease trap designed. It's approved by the water department, by Larry and by Ellen.
I got that memo. We got that email.
Okay.
And the duct work is the same thing. We've been working with the health department on all their requirements for a commercial kitchen. This is a very light commercial kitchen. I think there's one fryer for doughnuts, very little cooking.
Now, the front, you say, is not going to change much, or is there something that needs to go to?
No, if it were to change, it would be under a separate application for the tenant.
Okay.
Do we know if the cafe is morning, day and night, or is it just morning and day?
I believe it's just morning and day. Angela, are you on? No, I thought the owner would be here. I believe it's just morning and day. Angela?
Is there any lighting proposed on the front of the buildings?
I'm here, sorry. I was having, it's easier to mute yourself than it is unmute yourself. It will open in the morning at 6:30 and will be closed by 3:30.
Is it seven days a week?
Yeah.
Okay.
The lighting was all approved in 18 and we're not changing it.
Any other questions by the board?
This is Brian. I have a couple of questions, please.
Go ahead.
I'm envisioning that the lot and then, Jess, or somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, there's also some space in the back, partial space in the back. Talk to me a little bit about that.
AMP is in there, isn't it?
AMP is back there. The patrons are allowed to park anywhere on-site. There's an open space in back. There's a wetlands. So we really don't have spaces outside of the front of Healing Arts and the side of Sunflower.
Right, and you have, again, correct me if I'm wrong, and so you have the side where AMP in Healing Arts is and then there's a little space in the back where you could kind of turn around, but it's very limited back there.
Yes, and that is in a flood zone and wetlands, so we really can't have parking back there.
I guess my concern with two additional businesses there, I mean, that lot is fairly crowded most of the time, as is. And I'm just envisioning a lot of congestion there. I'm not saying that it's a deal breaker for me, but I'm sure you have the same concerns.
Yes, both of these businesses are really grab-and-go businesses, so we're hoping there'll be a quick turnover. And it's also on the end of the lot where the bank patrons usually park.
So here's, you know, it's interesting because we have another situation down the street a little bit that is wanting to do a quote-unquote grab-and-go business. And I think folks are trying to figure out how to, you know, work their businesses with the limitations of our town. And I just, we're seeing more and more of activity in this area. And I envision challenges associated with that. That's more of a comment.
Yeah, well, one of the benefits of this space is that we have more parking than many other businesses in town. And we also have a line of parking across Tinker Street, which I've noticed people using even when they go to Sunflower. This actually has one of the more generous parking situations than most of town.
All right, does any other member of the board have any question for this project?
Well, I guess the only question I have is you're showing quite a lot of interior seating for grab-and-go, if I'm reading your drawing properly.
I wanted to maximize the occupancy so we could get the right amount of spaces. I don't know if it's going to be that many seats.
Okay. All right, Melissa, this is basically a site plan update. So procedurally, we're going to have to get this onto the original full site plan, correct? Before we can sign it?
I don't know because there was already a public hearing with this. It was all solved. It was just the issue of the parking that wasn't resolved. Everything else was done.
Okay.
All the conditions were met except for this parking and the final development fee.
Okay, because there's nothing else changed on the exterior?
No.
No changes there?
How many spaces?
Go ahead, John.
How many spaces do they need?
13.
Excuse me, Melissa?
13.
13, additional?
Yes, that they would pay for.
With liquor store traffic, you know, I'd be surprised if the other occupants or tenants, neighbors would not be interested in learning or should be notified about these changes. I don't know what the board thinks about that.
You guys are the planning board, you.
Well, we've already had a public hearing on this. We've already just known that we were going to divide this building up into several more offices. So we've had a public hearing. We knew this was what, we've already approved it.
This was really just, the conditions were met, it got lost in the shape, and yeah, now we're here.
Okay, and forgive me, when was that hearing, please?
July 18.
Thank you, 2018.
Okay, so it's been three years.
Well, I think the issue is the usage of the space. The space hasn't changed. But I don't know if, you know, the fact that it's a liquor store or bakery is in our bellywreck, is it?
No, not what's in it.
This is, okay. Basically, Ellen sent them to us because the last resolution, the conditions weren't meant. So that's why I put this as a discussion, because you, the planning board, has to figure out how we're going to move forward.
Well, what wasn't?
I have a question. Sorry.
The parking calculations weren't figured out because they weren't aware of how many they needed. So it was kind of left in limbo, which also left the final development fee unfigured.
That was based on what kind of interior use was going to be made, but it's strictly a parking question, yes?
Yes.
And this is Stuart. What was the condition that wasn't met with regard to the parking, if you know?
The number of spaces are based on the use.
Provision, so was it a condition of the approval that the owner provide the number of spaces? Is that it?
Yes, precisely.
That's it? That's it? Now they're coming in with the number.
Yes.
They got the number.
Okay.
All right, Melissa.
That's my suggestion of amending the resolution, plugging in the numbers for the parking, plugging in the calculations, taking care of the final fee and moving forward. If you, the planning board, are okay with that. Again, this already had a public hearing.
Seems to me that that's what is within our purview to do. We needed to know what the use was going to be in order to calculate the parking and finish everything. And now that we know what the use is going to be, I don't see anything that holds it up.
I agree.
Thank you.
Is there any issues with the gateway?
Not in the gateway.
Yeah.
That was the question.
Nope.
Well, exactly, John, because as the building inspector pointed out in regards to the sushi takeout, you'd have to get a variance.
That's if it's in the gateway. You're saying it's not in the gateway overlay?
Gateway, right, Judy? I looked it. I didn't think it was.
It's not. I don't think the gateway goes over that far. I mean, I can find that map and take another look.
I don't think it does either, but.
It wasn't in any of the old stuff. Gateway was never mentioned in all the plans and everything that I went through.
Right, exactly, exactly. Yeah, I'm sure it's not in the gateway.
I got the drawing.
Okay, all right, Melissa, so let's go with your plan.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on. Okay, Jess, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Okay.
Okay, so next on our agenda is Ken Panza is going to review his letter to the planning board with us, if he's with us.
All right, let me turn this on here.
Does anybody want to see the gateway? I have it available.
This is an inner route, Judy. Can you tell? Is it?
I see that it is. I think the bank, well, you know what, I can't tell.
So it's, now the gateway should go up through the playhouse.
Well, the playhouse is.
There, yeah.
There, and it does go across to the next lot, but I think that's where the credit union is, isn't it?
Yes, it is. It's not the gateway. There's a big lot to one more over.
This is Mountain Meadow, right here.
It looks like it ends at Ferguson Creek.
I mean, it's not a very good map and Jerry tells me he has never had any reason to have a shape file of it. So as far as I know, that drawing is all there is.
All right.
So it's near the gateway, but it's not in it.
It's near it, but not in it, correct?
We don't want them in it.
All right, so let's move ahead. Ken Panza is going to explain his letter to us, please, Ken.
All right. I sent this letter to you just to fill in some missing blanks. There were two letters. One was at the beginning of February, which kind of summarized what the Aquifer Protection Working Group has been doing. And this was just a letter that kind of was sort of an amendment. What caused it was that the zoning revision committee has approved the next version of the Aquifer Protection Law and sent that on to the town board, which means eventually it's going to come back around to the planning board. Now, you know, I can go through a little bit of the history because several members of the planning board lived through this. This process a couple of years back. I know like John and I'm sure Peter and Connor. If it wasn't on the planning board, at least with Jay. So we're we're that process is ready to start off again. And so there were two groups working on this. And it was really built off of the planning board letter of May ninth, twenty seventeen. Which was the last. Action the planning board took on like two two years of evaluation of the Aquifer Protection Law. And that that letter essentially laid out. Four requirements or four issues. Uh, one was to update the law, which is what the zoning revision committee did. The other issues had to do with extending the sewer system out to Bearsville. Which is a group, the Aquifer Protection Group, which was set up independently of the zoning revision committee looked at. The second issue had to do with the maps. There were some, you know, there are a variety of consultant maps. And we put those all together into one map with Judith Judith has because that was what we did part of the. Natural resource inventory. And the third issue had to do with an educational program for people who live over the aquifer. You know, like put up some signs saying you live over an aquifer, instructions for how to. Manage your septic system, use of chemicals, pharmaceuticals being flushed down the toilet, things like that, which would enter the. Could enter the the water supply. So the the reason I wrote this letter is just to kind of fill in the blanks between the last issue, the last report that we received from. The water consultant, Steve Winkley, which was October, two thousand seventeen. And when the planning board finally responded to that, which was May twenty seventeen. Uh, I thought that was a a long period of time, but after I looked at the at the at the record, you know, it was. The town board got it. They have a public hearing, then they had to do some other things. They sent it to the planning board. The planning board actually responded to it quite quickly because they had two or three years of of record on this. So the reason, you know, just to give you a little bit of background and maybe an upfront warning. That this is coming around again. The zoning revision committee has submitted the a new version of the of the law to the town board. And they'll go through their thing and eventually it'll come back to you. And the Aquifer Protection Group, which was another, which was set up independently of the zoning. Revision Committee. Considered the issue to do with the the extension of the sewer system. The maps and we'll do the and we'll take care of the the educational program requirements. So that's just a, you know, a short story to to kind of tell you why I wrote that letter, which was just to kind of. Document where we've been and. And then fill in some of the gaps.
Uh, thank you, Ken. John, you want to comment on that? I know you.
No. John has three letters of comments on this.
All right, other members of the board have questions for Ken?
I just appreciate Ken's continuing input on this. It's helpful to. Those of us like me who haven't been on the board more than a couple of years. So it's good to have all of that.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure as this process continues, we'll have a more chance to go through the history and the background and and. And reduce some of the the past record, but. You know, I just wanted, you know, I was on the agenda for last week, which I didn't really understand I was, but. So I called up Melissa and said, well, I'm happy to come in and. Say a few words.
Very good.
I'm always happy to receive emails from Ken. I'll take them any day.
I have a question.
Yes.
It seems to me this is something that would be implemented more in the building department, wouldn't it?
Revision to the zoning law?
No, issues having to do with with the. With the aquifer overlay. They would have to be watching for that when they look at building plans.
Well, there has to be an aquifer overlay for them to look at that.
Uh huh. That's true. I was kind of assuming there will be.
Well, we have a map of it now. I mean, that's the that was one of the reports we submitted to the planning board, and that was one of the maps we created in the natural resource inventory.
And it is now on my map, so if we are doing any. Out out in that area, we can bring it up and see where the boundaries are.
Well, it's it's there now because we now have a complete one map with everything on it.
Yep.
But.
Didn't have that before.
So.
And it's only taken. And it's only taken forty years, Ken.
Yeah, we've been working on this a long time. The glaciers will melt before we get.
Yes, indeed. And as a, you know, comment.
Any other questions for Ken?
Well, I just wanted to comment that Ken's input over the years has been invaluable. And I wanted to thank you.
Well, thank you very much, John.
Yes, thank you, Ken.
We spent a lot of time with their your May seventeenth letter or May ninth letter of two thousand seventeen because that was the our start. That's the instructions we got from the supervisor. You really need to start with that letter. And we worked with the Department of Health to to work on these these issues. And. And so that's where hopefully we responded to a lot of the issues.
Okay, well, Ken, thank you very much, and we'll take it from there.
All right, well, hopefully.
Good luck. Keep going. Thank you for all your work.
It's coming around again, so I just thought I'd give you.
Okay.
All right, thanks a lot.
All right, thanks, Kim. All right, next on the agenda. Is the proposed local law number one of the year, which is the the review of the fill law. And the supervisor has asked us to. Comment on it now. Stuart wrote a letter to the supervisor from the planning board. Wanted to clear up the issue of who gives the permits between the planning board and the building department. And the supervisor went to the county planners. And the county planners came back and said, well, maybe the planning board doesn't. Know that much about Phil, but so on and so forth. So. My rereading of this fill law. Says that. Specific conditions require getting a permit, which is how much fill and how much area requires getting a permit. And a permit comes from the building department. And the building department is responsible for the type of fill, if it's clean, as as Matt. Mentioned like, what's the definition of clean fill? But the bottom line is that. To me, I'll ask everybody else that the the law says that if the if if a case is before the planning board, be it a site plan review or subdivision or whatever. And that application requires fill. It still seems to me that if there's fill that meets this requirement, that it has to be approved by the building department. That's the way I read it. So Stuart, what do you think?
Well, I respectfully read it differently unless it's been changed since. Uh, they originally proposed, which I don't think it has. That that's what prompted me to. Uh, raise the issue to begin with because there's that provision up at the top. I don't have in front of me, but. It seems to say that for all. Well, permits come out of the building department, except for matters that are pending before us, and in which case we are the approval authority. So. That's why I thought it needed clarification. Does that mean that we then have to be the permit issuer? Uh, if it's before, if there's a fill issue before us on a site plan modification or subdivision, because it seemed to me that it did. And when I spoke to Bill about it, when I was going to get a. Well, I don't remember was at a vaccine visit where he was out front asking questions or with some other by email, but. I raised it and he initially, he told me that. He that was his in the his initial intention because he says he drafted it was to have the planning board. Take on the the responsibility if it's otherwise something in our bailiwick. And then when I raised the concern about. That I don't know that we have the expertise or how the board would feel about it. You know, he was asking me to give him language to clarify, and I didn't really want to get into that because I wasn't sure it's even a good idea. So I didn't. But so then he wrote me back and he says. Uh, well, he agrees that, you know, the as between us and the building inspector, the building inspector has the greater expertise in this area. So it sounded to me like he was going to, you know, pull that provision out. But then he went to the. County and the person he spoke to at the county thought that maybe the planning board could could handle it since we handle other remediation measures and things like that. I don't remember the exact reference point that that they raised over there. So. Now he wants comment. I still have concerns about. I think to me it's still something that we ought not necessarily take on. Because I don't know that it's in our area of expertise and I don't know why the building inspector just can't do it. But I don't want to prejudice other people's point of view. That's just my own view. And I think that the vagueness of the the law in terms of. Not really clear clearly indicating what is our role versus what is the building department's role is still a problem. But I but in answer to your question, Peter, I read it that on the way I read the the proposed law. If it if it comes to if the fill issue. Comes up in a matter that is already before us or that is before us, then it falls to us to issue the permit, which means we have to look at the quality of the fill, the cleanliness, the. The amount and so so and these are really, you know, technical issues. So. I I don't know if the recent experience that they've had with another property in the town involving an excavation and fill and so on. It played a role in in the impetus to. You know, move this to the planning board. I I don't know.
I'm assuming that.
What's that?
I have been assuming that.
And Peter has mentioned that there's already a regulation on the books in. In the town regarding excavations. That begs the question, why do we? Why do we need to know the law? But. That's for the town board to to decide that they're the they're the legislative body, so. Yeah. Those are my comments.
I, yeah. Yeah, I I do believe that there is. Laws on the books regarding cutting and filling, but the way. I not some read it or interpret it is that. If a case is before the planning board, whether it's a subdivision or a site plan review. And if the planning board finds out that there needs to be. A amount of fill brought in that meets the criteria. Then it seems to me the planning board has to ask the the building department for to to permit it. It to me, it's like septic approval. We don't engineer or approve the septic. The county does. We just accept it in our application. So I'm saying that if there's a a job comes before us and it requires fill, then we ask the building department to issue that permit. Or not.
I I agree. That's the way it should should be. But I'm not sure that that's what the law says, that the way they wrote it. And I mean, going back to square one on this, Peter, we're going around a bit of a circle. And they put that provision up there towards the top where they where they said, except for matters before the planning board, in which case the planning board is the. The decider, as I interpret it. You know.
I just mean where to decide or if it's already been if it gets permitted.
Can I ask a question?
Got a per go ahead.
Um, first, thank you, Peter, and and thank you, Stuart. Is there? Is there ever an instance? Where Phil is required. That the building department would not be involved?
No, I mean, the now in this new law, they're giving specific numbers of square footage or or volume. That meets that it has. That's the criteria. So John could speak more than myself, but I have never yet on the planning board seen us come against a fill issue. Ever. When we do housing, which is in is only in the scenic overlay. We do ask if the material is going to be taken off site or stored onsite. And we ask that so that it can be protected with silt fencing and so on. But we've never ever that I know of dealt with a fill issue.
And I can't imagine that we should. I think it should remain with the planning board and and I respectfully, I have to.
The building department.
Yeah, with the building firm. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So I think I agree with Stuart. We don't want to deal with this.
Stuart's saying the way it's written is not clear. I agree. It's not clear. It says that the planning board issues the permit. I think it should say that the but the building department issues the permit if it's needed in a project in front of the planning board.
Okay.
Just like a septic system. If you need a septic system, you get county approval. It comes before us and we say, yeah, because we.
Okay, I'm following that now. Sorry about that.
So anyway, anybody else on the board have feelings on that?
Well, who who are the notes on on who wrote? Who wrote the notes on this copy that we got?
Matthew. Matt.
That was, yeah, done through through the town board and supervisor McKenna.
Okay, so that's the January twentieth stamp on the on the law, and it's got some red in it, which is the modifications.
Well, that's the suggested. That was Matt's feedback.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yep.
You know, one more comment if I can. You know, Brian asked a question. Has the planning board? Is the planning board? Is the building? Is there a situation where the building department is not involved in these fill issues? And my reaction to that is there will be if this law passes without being corrected. Because it gives the. Town the ability to just say pass it to the planning board and it's all put on our our agenda. And then the building department say. There's a modification pending of your site plan issue. You guys have to decide and then she'll just go on to other things. I mean, that's technically what I think the law allows under a reasonable reading of. What they're proposing, and that's why it has to be correct.
I mean, I what Stuart brought up in his original letter to the supervisor is, you know, we're not equipped to tell you if it's clean fill or not, or what's in the filler. Or how much or anything. We'd have to get an engineer. I mean, it's just not something we do. I mean.
And this is the building department's expertise, and he agreed with me. But.
You're talking about A one? I mean, A A three there approving authority?
Yeah, I don't have in front of me. Sorry.
Approving authority, right. A three, yeah.
Um, I can do the next week. Develop a memo, write some thoughts, shoot it to you guys, and then we can just agree and I can shoot it to them. And if I missed any of your points, but I I think I got them. How's that sound?
All right.
We have issues with it like that. That's it, you know.
Everybody else? Okay, great. Melissa, great. Everybody else on the board okay with that?
Yeah.
I'd like to see it before it goes out.
Oh, of course, of course, of course, of course. I'm gonna I'm gonna email you that next week. I'll work on it at the beginning of next week.
Whatever. Whatever's good for you.
You will see. I need your feedback, Stuart.
I had my fill of the fill law.
Oh.
Sorry. I couldn't resist you.
Sometimes.
I I see your points, Stuart. It really is kind of. Unclear.
I know you're digging it. Okay.
If you've had enough of the fill, let me get you with this one, the moratorium.
Oh. What moratorium? For what?
We have a moratorium with fill laws. No, seriously. Second, we've been asked to comment on it. It it's in the paper today, by the way, if you've noticed. And the issue for I listened to the town board meeting that brought it up. And it seemed to me the basic issue, the basic complaint was. Non-residents, specifically corporations, LLCs. Buying residences solely for the purpose of short term rentals. And that seems to be their issue. And Stuart, somebody I don't have a rap, I can't wrap my head around how you're going to distinguish who can buy what building. I just. Like, I don't get it.
Can I show the map that I've been working on?
Yes, the map is is great. It shows where the short term rentals are.
But it also shows this interesting phenomenon. Let's see if I've got it. Here it is right here. This is the hamlet. The red is Waterfall Way plus some LLC owned properties. Uh, some of which pretty clearly belong to Waterfall Way and some of which I don't know. And in the blue is S is STRs, independent of who owns them. And if I back out a little bit, you will see that there is a lot.
Right, wow. So the basic question comes down to this. The the seems to be they want to create a change in zoning somehow. That's going to somehow figure out who can buy a building, whether it's a a resident, whether it's a corporation, whether it's an LLC. Or whether it's a foreigner or a tourist, who can buy the building? And then the other issue they seem to have is. It's well, it's with a housing, you know, affordable housing committee. Is that the short terminals are taking away from housing for locals, especially working folks. I prefer working. Housing rather than than affordable. And then the last issue. And then the last issue they seem to have was, well, now their neighbors are tourists and not old friends that have lived here forever. And my answer to that is it's not the short-term rental that drove them out. It's the taxes that drove them out. But so go ahead, board members. Let's hear some comments on moratoriums.
Uh, well, I guess just taking a stab at this. They everything you said is true and more and what they want to assess on this. I do think it's worth considering in terms of, I mean, we knew we do have a comprehensive plan. They're working on interpreting it in in so far as how we pursue affordable housing. But when and this is a little bit anecdotal, I guess, but you look at like the restaurant, boom, we had tons and tons of restaurants, pandemic hits. All of a sudden, you know, we've got a ton of people out of work. The floor is kind of silly. I wonder if it is, you know, worthy in and of itself to have a moratorium just to take a look at how we might for example, answer the question of, well, when the funeral home goes for sale, you know, do we need another funeral home? What else? If a funeral home is not economically viable, which is probably the case. You know, what is that is still a necessary service for a functioning town? Because I do share the concern that, you know, we are sort of becoming just a service town. Like, and and there are still people who live here.
Yeah, Connor, that's, you know, it's definitely a change over the years. You know, just like we became a bedroom community with the McMansions on the eight acre lots. Businesses have moved into town and there'd be more of the gas stations for sale, the funeral parlor. But I think the question that we're going to have to grapple with is they want to restrict somehow how who can buy homes. So they're saying if a resident buys a home, it's okay. But if an LLC buys it, I don't see how you can make a moratorium that excludes.
Well, the the moratorium is, in my understanding, they there and I don't know if they ended up putting this in the final draft, but you know, they're probably thinking it's going to be X number of months. Until they say, okay, now we, you know, this, that's our timeframe to come up with some sort of plan. And I wouldn't say it's a moratorium on selling to people, but thinking about working around for it as far as the ZRC goes, the zoning revision committee. How we might revise, say, the short-term rental law to discourage, to make it to make it unprofitable for LLCs to buy residential properties because we make it less permissive for non-owner occupied STRs. I'm just saying that's the kind of thinking we might see come out of there. That's the kind of questions I'm going to be asked.
Isn't the short-term rental law we already have already covered this? I mean, aren't we already like, we can't even give any more applications to people to to have short-term rentals?
But they can still buy up the properties. They can still anticipate to some. It an expansion. I mean, I imagine that, you know, once the cap has the cap has been hit pretty recently. It won't be long before they'll they'll probably be looking to expand.
Well, who who would want to expand it?
I I imagined this, well, when when I it was my understanding when when it came around that there would be a periodic reexamining of the cap. Especially in this early stage to figure out, you know, if and if and when it could expand and how to accommodate its expansion. So that could be.
On board votes on who on how whether it expands and how much expansion there is or who votes on it?
That that's my understanding, the town board.
But is the intent to expand it or is the intent to limit it?
Well, in as far as I think the Affordable Housing Committee would be concerned, it would be to limit it.
No, I mean, even when it was created, it seems to me that the issue that people were worrying about was exactly a change in the town that was significant enough caused by the establishment of STRs in existing buildings. That it made an impact on the social and cultural life of the town that was negative. And that was the reason for limiting it.
Why they'd want to expand it.
Exactly.
You know, I I felt that the whole point of this was was to limit. And that if people were compliant, they could hold on to their their permit. And if they weren't, then somebody else would get the chance to get that permit. But, you know, they could maybe expand it 20 people or something like that, maybe over the course of a couple of years, but I don't know. I.
Well, the original idea was that there was going to be this time period where everybody could register and then that was it.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And so if the town board was saying we want a moratorium on not having LLCs buy houses, is that what you're saying? Because I thought I thought the moratorium was on development.
I think they meant by development, they meant commercial buying of homes for commercial use or, you know.
But no, but also but also commercial development because they the other thing they were talking about in that meeting was lashers. And I think it was Woodstock Way that recently purchased lashers and.
Haven't purchased it. They're exploring it.
Well, that was one of my concerns and the reason I did that little red spot on the map is there's at least two houses there that are apparently reputedly owned by the Woodstock Way people. They are not licensed STRs. They're part of the hotel. They're being advertised as part of the hotel.
So they don't they don't come in front of the planning board to get approval for that?
No.
They just exist as separate houses?
As I know, they bought the buildings and I don't know that they, as far as I know, they do not have an approved STR. And they're using it as an extension of the hotel.
Wasn't that an issue for the?
But that's the impression that I have.
But that's an issue for the zoning enforcement officer, you know, are they exceeding their approved site plan? You know.
Okay.
Or are they operating without the required permit? That's that's for the CEO.
This is a lot of the conversations I have with our our letter that goes out to the neighbors. And and this whole moratorium discussion just the last few days, I'm getting how do people have STRs and are corporations? Exactly what Stuart just said. This is all within the CEO. The zoning enforcement officer, this comes to the planning board because it's the way the law was written. The actual operating permit goes through the zoning enforcement officer.
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. They do the inspection. And the the public is concerned. I'm getting more and more calls. We're doing more and more cases. We're sending more and more letters. The map's just going to get more full when we get through the number. The reason that the town did this law was to set a cap, to limit it. They were trying to regulate it. And at one point they lowered the number. I'm not sure of the exact numbers. But.
Go ahead, Stuart.
Isn't there a provision in the short-term rental law already with respect to limiting how many corporations or LLCs can get a permit?
I think so.
Yes.
They create it any differently than just a normal homeowner?
No, there is a provision in there. I have to go back and look at it, but I might bear on this this issue.
I I the one thing that stands out to me is you can't have like two properties on one house. You can't be one owner and have three properties in Woodstock.
I'm just gonna go get my book. It's upstairs. I'll be right down.
But again, this is zoning. This is.
LLC thing is a bit tricky because a private person can create an LLC just so their name isn't on the deed.
Exactly, Peter. You and I could go and tomorrow have an LLC of Melissa and Peter and we just went to a bank and signed for it. Yeah.
I have an LLC for my business, for my press. And, you know, one of the things I was looking at, just kind of eyeballing it, was where there are STRs that are owned by LLCs. And there are three or four up on Wittenberg Road, but they're not a lot.
But there's a lot of there's a lot of people whose lawyers recommend them to, you know, trusts and LLCs and all that. We can't, you can't tell, you can't say who can buy a house. I mean, Peter's exactly right. That's we'll be in front of the Supreme Court if you do that. So.
Totally agree. Or how they decide to put on on the deed and who the taxes, how they're going to file their taxes and who they're going to.
Comes discriminatory law and all that. I mean, it really goes into a lot of horrible.
Absolutely agree.
I mean, so the I mean, of course, the town board's just, you know, supervisor's just asking us for ideas. But it it seems to me that if the object is to put an end to corporations buying houses for short-term rentals, that's done by the short-term rental law itself. If we've met the limit, that's the limit. It's over.
The town board needs to not raise it if they're worried about it.
Right.
For moratorium, they they can just say, we're not going to raise it for a year or two and we'll look at it in a couple of years or something.
And the other issue is i- if you're talking about the zoning commission or, you know, changing the zoning law. That's not something that takes months. That goes through the state. That takes years.
Yeah.
If you're going to put a moratorium until the zoning is changed, don't hold your breath.
What about the provision just changing the short-term rental law? To only allow owner occupied. That'll put a crimp on it in a hurry.
Part of what it is, there's a certain amount of the permits that are owner occupied, there's a certain amount that aren't. And the ones that weren't owner occupied went the fastest. And I even had personal friends of mine call me saying, can you please get me one somehow? And I was like, no, they're gone. And that's too bad.
We only see owner occupied, the way the law was was wrote. We only see owner occupied if it's considered an establishment. So it's three bedrooms or more. All owner occupied was granted operating permits by the building department. We did not see them. We only saw the ones that fell underneath the table. But we saw all non-owner occupied.
Now, Melissa, the ones that I've mapped are just the ones we get or are they everything?
Nope, they're just the ones we get and up to date where we are. So continue going.
Can you get the rest of it so that I can?
I have it. I do not have time, Judy.
What form is it in?
I have a binder. Like I need to take time and differentiate. I'm I'm slammed.
Just think, if I got the binder, you know, instead of putting it into a into a spreadsheet, if I just go through it and add it to the map, we'll see what the situation is now.
My thought is, once I get through the stack that I have, which I'm working on very diligently. I can differentiate owner occupied, non-owner occupied, and you and I can go back and I can I can click it right into the Excel sheet. I just, I don't have time to even look at it right now.
But I keep remembering the situation in 2008 when the housing market crashed and corporations came in and they bought houses everywhere. And held them empty because they had the capital resources to do that. And we have not recovered as a nation yet from that particular exercise.
All right, Stuart, did you have something you wanted to add to this before we move on?
No, I think it would only confuse it more. I did find a provision, but I'm not sure if it was directly on point. There's there's a provision in short-term rental law that talks about the STRs have to be registered with Ulster County. And then in paragraph E that such that of the section, it says only the property owners permitted to register the STR. And it says an individual property owner can register, have an interest in one non-owner occupied unit. Then it says registration by a corporation whose owners have an interest in more than one STR is prohibited in in residential districts. So there's that restriction. You know, if somebody had, if someone has an interest in one place, they can't just form a corporation and get another one for another property. At least I remember there was something in there and that's it. And whether that controls what everybody's thinking about. Have to think about it further, but it really comes down to the the law that was drafted. You know, and I think.
Some of that concentration in town is in the Hamlet commercial.
Yeah.
Well, to John's point, you know, it seems like the simplest, fastest way to correct it is to change the short-term rental law.
Yeah.
I mean, rather than moratoriums and change zoning and whatnot, but. So Melissa, I don't know. I guess we'll compose some sort of response to the supervisor from the planning board. Maybe we'll email back and forth to each other to come up with something.
Yeah, we can do that.
John, do you have anything else to add to this thing?
No, but it no, I just the comment, STRs are out of control. And we need to deal with it.
It is a legislative issue, really. I think John's point, we'll take it. The town board has to, you know, step up and face it, deal with it.
All right, well, we'll close that issue. Next on the agenda is critical environmental areas. And she says thoughts and reflections on last week's collaborated meeting. I don't know if anybody's got any additional thoughts. But like I said about the Chestnut Hill application before us. You know, the applicant was nice enough to not develop half the property. And if it was in a critical environmental area, we could have been restrictive about it instead of just asking him. And we have, go ahead, Judy.
It's in a wetlands. He really didn't have a whole lot of choice, but he was he was, you know, courteous about not fighting it.
Right, but he included a lot of upland in that too.
True.
But anyway, so I don't know if anybody's got any thoughts. I came up with one thought as far as maybe a possibility, which is in areas that if we get around to creating a shape file of critical environmental areas would be to double the buffers on streams and wetlands. So instead of 100 feet, it'd be 200 feet.
I have a suggestion, Peter. I think I I don't I don't know what Ingrid is going to do. We're going to have a meeting with her, right? She's going to do a training for us. I think if we had time to look at what their maps show. We would identify areas that we really ought to do something about. You know, there's something close to pristine forest. There are areas with a lot of valuable flora and fauna kind of concentration. There are areas with high levels of climate resilience. They all tend to be high. And of course, there are people who own a lot of that stuff. Some of it may be state land. I don't know. But all of that is encompassed in the map packages that they gave us. And maybe, I don't know what Ingrid is going to do, but maybe what she ought to do, or if she doesn't, we ought to do is look at the data in that visual form and see what ideas we have about what needs protection.
I I feel like our last meeting with with WEC, WEC, Alex and and Giulio were totally on board with all of that and they were going to work on that. They were going to brainstorm into their meetings and get some area, some actual areas back to us. So I feel like we, that was last meeting, like we we did handle that and and we're moving forward. Does that make sense, planning board?
It does.
I see you, Max, Ann.
Well, I attended the WEC meeting last night and I think there's a little bit of confusion about what to give you. So I think they need a little bit, maybe more direction too about that. And I don't know if you remember, but Ingrid said at that the last PV meeting that that CEAs don't have the same regulatory ability to be enforced. So I think she was posing to you guys, is that what you really want to do? Because if it doesn't have enforcement. And then there was an article in the in the paper the other day. Did you see it, Peter, for New New Paltz and and New Paltz. The planning board, right? Some of the members were saying, this is too much. We have to stop layering all of these regulations. Is that a fair synopsis, Peter?
Well, it's funny, the town of Lloyd has brought it up in today's paper in that that the comprehensive plan is what all boards use to guide themselves. And much like we're talking about this moratorium about development and commercial development. Protection of the environment is the same idea. We have to, and our tool is the comprehensive plan. Because if we can put the layer like Judy's talking about officially. officially in the comprehensive plan, then the planning board can use that when reviewing applications. So that's pretty much that.
It has the same potential as the wetlands in the Warren Course Law. And it would have to be applied in a similar way, but the town board would have to make that a law, which at the moment.
Or amend the comp plan. Because making laws is complicated. Um, but if, if it was in the comp plan, a layer just like these other things, then it would be a guide to us when we review. And anyway, there is a.
Peter, I'm intrigued by your doubling the buffer idea.
It's just an idea. I, I, we'll see. There is a, um, Melissa probably sent you all, there is a, a meeting on that Tuesday. I'm not sure what day it was, but it's during the week.
It's Tuesday.
It's during the workday.
It's next Tuesday, March 23rd. It's the, the one that Ingrid had discussed with us through DEP. It's one o'clock to 2:50, or 12 to 1:50. I, I sent you guys the email, I'm sorry.
I think it's one o'clock, Melissa.
Thanks, man.
Stevens from.
So we'll get some more information from that.
One to 2:15. I sent you guys the link to the DEP site if you want to register. Feel free. I plan on attending it with Ellen, actually. We're gonna, we're gonna do it in my office. I'll, I'll keep you guys posted if they do an after, or if there's any handouts, I'll, I'll, I'll download those.
Very good, very good. Excuse me?
Well, boy, if I can, I have to like plug it into the calendar.
Okay, so unfinished business. We have an update from the site visit to 16 Yuri Hill Road from Stuart and I think it was Connor. I don't know if they sent it in, but did everything look okay?
Yeah, the, Dan, based on what we talked about and what they had submitted, they're going to be revising their drawings, though. Uh, they're going to reduce some of the expansion they had planned to do as a second story and focus more on the first story, basically because they didn't want to pursue approval and tests for a septic system that they may or may not go with.
And of course, they're in the, in the wellhead protection district.
Yeah, they, what they want to do is expand this building's warehouse capacity and create a bunch of garage door entryways into the back so that they can use this place for storage. In order to make it viable, they want to add offices, but in order to add offices, they have to start making it more habitable, as it were, and.
No bathroom for that. They need to put in a bathroom and a septic.
Exactly. So they, they do have ambitions down the line, they said, to try to create some workforce housing on a, on a part of the land that they own. The question became, though, whether or not it would support it, and if the terrain would work to the benefit of both. And it was answering that question that they just didn't seem ready to pursue. So what they come back with is going to be reduced from what they initially, yeah.
So I'm expecting new plans from them after you guys saw them?
Yeah, yeah, they're going to just erase what was there.
Okay.
All right.
If, if I could just add on to that, because Connor and I were there with, uh, Ian Vinci of the company and their architect, Michael Lockwood. And they're going to be adding some spaces at the rear of the property, which are very close to the property line, but, um, and there's a number of residential, small residential houses just on the other side. So they're going to be putting up additional lighting for, for the parking area. So we talked to them about it needs to be dark sky compliant and shielded from spilling over onto the neighbors, you know, houses. And we also talked to them about getting a photometric study because of the close proximity of the, of the neighboring houses. And the architect thought that would not be a problem uh, arranging that through the supplier of the, of the lights to actually come out and get, get the photometrics done. Um, the other point about the, um, uh, renovation of the existing building is that their plans still call for raising the level where the office space was going to be at it, but they're just going to make that storage now on the revised plans to, so they don't have to deal with a septic. Or, and, but the height of, is going to be raised. And so, um, I think they have provided elevations, but when the revised plans come in, we want to make sure that that height is, is within the zoning because it's directly across the street from other houses. And if it changes the profile, that could invite a complaint. So uh, we just want to make sure that whatever they come in with on their final plans or, or in their next set of plans, that the elevations are, are not higher than is allowed.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, great. Thanks for making a site visit, folks.
Okay.
All right, um.
Thanks, guys.
Stuart, uh,
Sir.
Make a motion to adopt the draft resolution for Irkman.
All right, so I'll make a motion at the planning board to adopt the resolution as drafted for the Irkman application under special use permit case number 21-0581.
All in favor, second first, I guess?
Go move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Well, now it's Melissa's turn.
All right.
Favorite, favorite subject, STRs.
All right, so this, this meeting, these are the ones we got. SUP number 21-0591, Rachel and Nicholas Aldrich. SUP number 21-0592, Theodore Murphy and Amelma Fausti. SUP number 21-0593, Stephen and Diane Lewis. SUP number 21-0594, WKSB LLC. SUP number 21-0595, Ford Croll Jr. SUP number 21-0596, Moondance Holdings LLC. SUP number 21-0597, Emily Sinkler. SUP number 21-0598, Carol Mayer. SUP number 21-059, Romaine Lamaz and Fauzia Com. SUP number 21-600, Declan Baldwin. All right, folks.
Hey, so I'll make a motion at the planning board, adopt the draft resolutions in each of the cases just recited by, by Melissa Gray.
So move. You're a second?
So move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Yay.
Hey, all right, John. Thanks.
Makes more work for me. I'm just kidding. I get it. I get it.
Enough's enough.
All right. Well, the time ran a long time. Does anybody else have anything to add before we adjourn?
No.
All right, accept a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
Favor.
I have one comment, one comment. I read in the New York Times that Sally Grossman passed away, and, and that's the same Sally Grossman that has been.
Oh, I didn't know.
And so on. Yeah, it was actually an interesting obituary. I'm just kind of surprised that nothing has happened in the town yet, or in the newspaper taking note of that.
Wasn't the newspaper.
The New York Times and Rolling Stone.
Right, but not in the Woodstock Times, where she, where she's a notable.
I know.
There should be something at the, at the Bear complex, but I think there was not the best blood between the two of them.
Melissa has some beautiful quotes about her in Rolling Stone, actually.
Yeah.
I heard she was a knockout this week from someone who recalls.
What's that, John?
Said 40 years ago, that was true.
John.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, motion to adjourn. Thank you all.
Right.
Good night. Melissa, I just sent you an email.
Okay. Thank you, I think.
You all, have a good night.
What you think when you get it?
Okay, I'll write you back.
All right.
Thanks, Judy.